Good evening, this is Thursday, April 7th, the Situate Planning Board. We have an agenda that has been published. We have a motion to accept it.
I move to accept the agenda, as we all have.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first item on the list is public hearing for accessory dwelling special permit, 330 Gannett Road. And Adrian Rolls?
Yes.
Yes. And gentlemen, I assume you're sitting over there because you are refusing yourself?
Exactly, I'm in a butter.
Okay.
And I probably will be involved with the project from the permitting point of view.
Okay. So let the record show. Good evening.
Good evening.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us who you are and what you're looking to do here?
Sure, my name is Adrian Rolls, I'm the new owner of 330 Gannett, which I call Camelot. And I'm in the process of making it so. And so there was an existing apartment, it appears to have been there for quite some time, and it needs a little bit of TLC, but in the meantime, I would like to have it considered and approved as a special accessory dwelling. I do travel from time to time for my business, and I do have pets, and I don't have family or anything, so it would be wise, since that property is off the street, to have somebody around most of the time.
Go ahead. And I assume you have the package here for your facility. Can you sort of, you have a layout here?
It is in the packet, yes.
Oh, that's what I was missing.
It's a studio, and I would only want one person, under any circumstances, the less people, the better. And so it's a, under 500 square feet, I believe.
And this is part of the existing house?
It's actually over the barn.
Over the barn, okay.
Yeah.
Detached.
Mm-hmm. It has two means of egress, so it has the two stairways. So I thought that was important to note.
Bedroom, kitchen area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Laura, did you have?
I have photos, if you want to look at them.
Well, let me just get to Laura first.
I sent some photos around, so I think, yeah, you could see those.
Okay.
It's a kind of interesting property, because it's way back from the street. It is adjacent to the commercial zone, the business zone in North Situate, so it's directly adjacent to some heavy equipment and stuff that's, you know, kind of stored in back of the salon.
There it is.
Taj, I guess it's called.
I found it.
There were a couple of things that came up during the review by other department heads, the main one being that the septic system is in failure right now, and when that came up, it also appeared that there were actually a total of five bedrooms there, because, you know, different rooms have been, you know, being used as bedrooms.
Six.
Yes, a front and a main house, and one in the basement. Yeah, yeah. So those are things that really need to be addressed, because you can't get an occupancy permit for good reason when your septic system is, you know, is in failure. You ordinarily can't transfer property when there's a failing septic, but if, you know, certain circumstances, if a bank isn't involved, you can do it. So there's definitely some issues with that. What I would recommend that you do is to really make sure that that septic is squared away, you know, that that whole issue is squared away, before you do anything to encourage or enable it to be rented. The other thing that had come up was there were some questions about the smoke detectors and the carbon monoxide detector, and Mrs. Rolls did get an inspection from the fire department, and that seems like that's all squared away. So the main thing seems to be the septic.
Would you like for me to address how I'm changing?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. It appears that Mr. Robinson had a little more of a community or commune lifestyle on the first floor, the main floor. I believe it was either he or his father lived in one half of the house. So there were two kitchens, so what would be ordinarily, on a typical Cape Cod floor plan, would normally be the dining room, had been turned into a kitchen area with a stove, a refrigerator, and it's right next to the real kitchen. And then the living room was turned into a bedroom, and they added a closet. So I have just changed it back to what would be an ordinary Cape Cod lifestyle. So it's going to have a living room and a dining room, one bedroom upstairs, which will be mine, and then in the basement, one of the rooms will be a guest room. The other room will be for any foster animals that I take in, because it will have easy access to a secure area outside.
And this is the main house?
Yes, so it'd only have two bedrooms, and the second bedroom would only be used, as I mentioned, for guests. It's not going to be on a regular basis. I don't have any family, and I choose to live alone, so it'll be a very, I have a very small footprint. And then the other active, you know, active participant would be over the, in the apartment. So there would really be two active bedrooms, or two living, two people living there with the occasional guest.
Okay. Have you addressed the septic system issue yet?
Oh, certainly. I contracted with Greg Morris on March 3rd and paid him, you know, a deposit, and he assured me, we've met a number of times, and, or twice anyway, and he assured me that it would be submitted last Wednesday, so I'm assuming that it's been filed to the health department?
It was filed today with the health department.
Okay.
It was?
Yes.
It was filed today.
It was filed today, but they have the board of health's 45 days with which to respond.
Oh, dear.
And it's filed for a three-bedroom, is that what you're?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
They'll have to go through the property, and bedrooms have to be, you know, really decommissioned, they usually open up the entrance from, you know, instead of having a door that shuts, they'll take that out and widen it up, the whole entrance, take out the closets, I mean, there are certain things that have to be done. So I think that the health director wants to really go through and take a look at everything, and just make sure everything is squared away.
It's already done. Yeah.
Where she didn't have the application until today, you know, I don't believe she's done that.
Right.
She wouldn't have done that.
Right, yeah.
Okay. What's your idea?
No, I was just going to say, well, no, no, my main reading through all the materials, the only issue was really the septic system.
Mm-hmm.
And, I wouldn't call this a barn, I'd call it a garage. What makes it a barn?
I'm a farmer at heart, and I've just moved back from having farms all my life, so I envision that it will have a farm feel, it'll feel like a barn when I'm done with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think the actual, and I believe if, from the materials that you presented, I'm trying to, was it the percentage was, for the square footage, was under the primary?
Yeah.
All that was good, so there was no issues. I really just think that we have to wait till the, till we get the board of health sort of stamp, or to have their seal of approval on it.
Does that mean approve the plan, or approve, because I'm looking at, I have a tenant who's, was hoping to move in next week, because he's also one of the carpenters. And since I have extensive, extensive work to do, we've just found numerous leaks, because the place wasn't winterized properly yesterday and today, I found this out. I am, you know, asking for, since I did contract with a, with Mr. Morris before I even owned the property, literally the day after I signed the purchase and sales agreement, I contracted with him, and I said, "We need to start the day that I close," which was last week. So I just don't want to lose any more time, I have somebody who's, has no other place to move to, and who's also on my team for helping, as well as covering when I travel. So what I'm, I guess what I'm requesting is, since I've done everything I can on my part, by an early application, and, you know, committed to the well-being of the property, can we condition it, condition it and allow for this tenant to move in? I'm not even moving in until May 1st.
Well, we don't have, we don't have authority on, on board of health issues, right, maybe we have to leave that to the board of health. I don't think we can say whether a tenant can move in or not.
Yeah.
We're really looking at whether we approve the special permit for the accessory dwelling.
Right.
And that would certainly, as Richard suggested, needs, need to have the septic system addressed in order to do that. And I suppose we could condition it, but it would be better to have the board of health sign off on it.
I think the board of health has to sign off for, in order for an occupancy permit, my understanding?
Right.
According to Greg Morris, he said that the septic is still usable in the meantime, it's just that I have 60 days from which to perform, but I was trying to get it done sooner than 60 days. I, I'm, I work, I try to get things done earlier than later. So my point is, it's a condition, even from the seller, which was Freddie Mack, I mean, Fannie Mae, I bought it on foreclosure, and I have to have this, you know, tied up within 60 days, which is why I went in with an early contract. So that's why I'm saying is it's, they did say it still works in the meantime, it just isn't up to code.
So what does the designation of an accessory dwelling give you? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
It makes it legal for the town, for someone to be on the property, that's what I'm concerned about. It's, it treats it as a modified to family, but with not changing the zoning, because my needs are that I, it is off the road, and I do travel a lot, and I don't want any vandalism, and I need people to oversee my family, which is a furry family, as well as continuing to do the work. He has a regular job, and then he works for me nights and weekends. So that was my thought.
Okay, I'm just...
It's not going to impact the septic system that much with the one person, and I will be on the phone with Greg tomorrow, because I was promised it was supposed to be submitted last week, so, like I say, I'm losing a week here and a week there, and that's, that's not acceptable.
Well, it's...
That's not, that's not your fault, it's mine with the, with the...
Let's put that one...
Yeah.
Right here for the moment, just see if Bob or Anna have any other questions.
Well, again, everything else seems typical, normal, there's, there's no real outliers here, other than the septic system. My question is, or, in my reading, I didn't, it didn't pass the current codes for the six bedrooms that it had, the property had, or?
No, it's, it's in failure.
Okay, all right, so regardless of the number of bedrooms, that septic system is not?
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was what I wanted to clarify, so, okay, so we need to, that needs to be addressed. Okay.
Yeah?
Could you move into the house tomorrow, if you wanted to?
No.
No, you can't.
No.
It's uninhabitable.
Um, right now with the, we don't have any water, because there's two leaks that have been found out in the garage, and at least one leak in the house, and possibly a leak in the driveway with a major pipe that was just found today.
It just keeps getting better.
I know, but I signed up for foreclosure property. It may not be as bad as it sounds, because it could be the next-door neighbor's property, that's what the town thinks, but nonetheless, my plan was, I'm still in a rental situation till May 15th, and I was going to leave on, on May 1st.
One of the things that we, applicants need to understand, that if and when the accessory apartment is approved, there's a 20, is it 20 or 21-day appeal process.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, there's just, it's, it's time, it's all about the time.
Right.
And is, is there any possibility, I'm just asking this question, that you could get an extension from Fannie Mae?
I already own the property.
Okay, so then?
It's, what?
But you have a, you have a clock ticking in terms of...
Yeah, they, I don't honestly think they're, I mean, they own it, I own it, they don't, they're not going to come and take it away, it's, that's not the issue. I simply had to sign a form that the reason that I was aware of the failed septic, and that I would act in good faith to have this resolved within 60 days, that was part of the closing documents.
Well, and it would seem that it's almost an insurmountable, because the board of health takes at least 45 days.
Well...
That gives you...
They don't necessarily take that long.
Yeah, Greg said it's two to three weeks, which, which he has said a couple of times, which is why, again, I stress, I, the day after I got the purchase and sales, I contracted with him and said, "We need to start right away," because I have a, you know, obligation to myself, as to well as a tenant.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to, going to ask, you were speaking as if you felt you had the right to move into the property now, which I don't really believe is the case, because you need a certificate of occupancy, and I don't think they'll give you one with a failed septic. But if you were thinking of moving in, and you're traveling, and there's this carpenter who is almost going to be homeless unless he has a place to stay, maybe the carpenter can move into the main house until you get back, or move into your other apartment, I mean, there seem to be a lot of apartments in...
There aren't, you know, there's only one apartment. There's, there's only one.
Well, there are a lot of, you know, several dwelling spaces, and maybe something could be arranged somehow.
Well, no, it's, I mean, we're...
Because I don't think it's really the board's responsibility.
Right. Um, no, but I'm, but I'm saying that there seems to be a disconnect, because the man who manages the septics in the town, and quite a bit of them, led me to believe that it still works in the meantime, you just need to put forth the effort...
Septic system tests, right?
Yeah.
They fail Title V.
But that doesn't mean they have to move out of their house till they fix it, right?
Right.
So, so the question is whether you already have an occupancy permit.
Yeah, that's possible too.
I would think the house probably already does, right?
Correct.
I don't know.
Yeah.
So it fails Title V.
Right.
I mean, if my house failed Title V tomorrow, I wouldn't have to move out, I'd have up to, you know, a period of time to fix it.
Right.
To bring it up to code.
Right, and the board of health may ask you to do special things, like maybe pump it out once a month, or something like that.
Right, or whatever, so...
But that's up to the board of health.
That's right.
It's not really our purview.
I don't have... No, it isn't, and I don't have a problem with the accessory apartment, I really don't. And I think we could make a contingent upon certification that the septic system had been installed and inspected, so...
It would seem that would be our, our best course of action at this point.
Yeah, you can, you can do that, I mean, we, we are not going to be going out and inspecting the septic or knowing anything about it. So I think the only danger you run is you're kind of encouraging the use of that unit, and if that unit really can't be used yet, you know, I think an alternative would be that you could ask Mrs. Rolls to come back.
I think that takes too much time.
Okay.
It's a lot of time, and we have no control, I mean, somebody could be living in that little apartment now as we speak.
Oh, but they're not?
I know, and I think that everybody's going to do the right thing. And so the, the accessory apartment certification would be delivered upon acceptance from the board of health to the planning board, that the septic system meets code.
Well, here's another idea, and maybe this is what you're saying, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but maybe this is exactly along the lines that you're describing, we could hang on to the special permit until the septic system is fixed.
There you go. There you go.
Yeah, that's fine.
So that gives you...
That would avoid having to come back here, rather than having the board of health certify that the septic system's functional, right?
Well, and it gives you the, the process there, if you need to prove to someone that this is in process, you can, you can say that it's contingent on that.
Mm-hmm.
Gets the ball rolling.
Yeah, the other factor is, I do have to refinance within 30 days and go with a traditional loan, and if, if qualifying was part of it with the legitimate tenant, the way Fannie Mae and Freddie Mack look, that was the other factor too. It's not a major factor, but it's a no, by the way. So I'm not...
Well, you would have, you would have a decision that was basically contingent on fixing the thing that they want you to fix anyway, right?
That I'm doing anyway.
So it would, you might, that should be acceptable to them.
Mm-hmm.
If we could, if we can write something that...
So does that work?
Any other questions at this point?
So just so I'm clear, is it contingent, does she, does the health inspector approve the plan, and then approve the final, obviously she has to approve the final, but is it upon the proof of the plan that's submitted, because it was submitted?
No.
I mean, the process is there.
It would be when the work is done.
Final inspection.
When the system was functional, is what we would make a contingent upon.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Any other questions? It does seem like that's the only open issue. And there's, is there, let me, I just have a couple of the questions, just with respect to the other components of it.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any modifications that are being done to the outside of the barn, or?
Not, no, not to that, that's not on phase one.
Interior?
Um, I have the permit, I walk by it every day, I keep meaning to bring it down here. I'm doing the standard windows, siding, and roof to the main house.
Okay.
Yeah, and obviously rouge and lipstick on the inside. The barn, nothing at this point that's on the exterior, just paint.
So the function, the functionality of the apartment is all interior space work, it's not changing the look of the facade, or anything like that, or expanding, or anything?
Oh, certainly not.
Okay. And, I don't know if anybody asked, but is there parking available?
There's a lot of parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what about services, water and power going to these?
Yes, it has a separate meter, and...
Separate, power meter?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
This is the, I don't know why it's rotated, but in the front of it. This is your barn.
That is my barn, yes.
So it has power, and it has water?
It has water, and I spoke with Mr. DeBarrows, and we decided that they were going to give me nine months to either put in a meter, separate meter, or go ahead and bury a line so that it can run off of my meter at my house.
Okay.
And so that's, that's the plan, so he's granted me nine months.
Was fine with that?
Yeah.
Or is he not?
I don't really know.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
We have a letter, yeah, just from the fire department, right?
Yeah.
And the board of health, obviously, with the septic system.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, given all this, do we have the makings of a motion?
Yeah, I think we have a motion. Longer than you would think, but it's not that long.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure the wording's...
Okay.
So, accessory dwelling special permit, 330 Gannett Road. I move to make the following findings a fact. Number one, according to the Situate assessor's records, the property at 330 Gannett Road is owned by Cornelius J. Robinson. What's the SO? Isn't that Kara?
Supplemental owner.
Oh, thank you. Supplemental owner, federal national mortgage. Adrian Rolls had a purchase and sale agreement to purchase the property, and a closing occurred on March 30th, 2016, making her the new property owner. The property is located in the residential R2 zoning district on a lot of 57,316 square feet. Number two, on March 15th, 2016, Adrian Rolls applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling within an existing detached garage slash barn on the property at 330 Gannett Road. A studio apartment currently exists on the second floor of the detached garage slash barn.
Mm-hmm.
Number three, based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the interior floor space of the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately 551 square feet. This meets the size requirements of five, excuse me, of 530.2F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings. Number four, a people GIS image shows the dwelling to have a paved driveway and a garage. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and ample parking for the primary dwelling. Number five, the owner has submitted a signed notarized statement that she will live on the property. Number six, there is not a current compliant Title V septic system serving the property, and there is no approval, approved plan or permit issued by the board of health for a septic system to be constructed to serve this property. The septic system must be in compliance with Title V prior to the primary unit or accessory unit being occupied. The applicant indicates a new septic system is under contract for three bedrooms. Number seven, exterior stairs to the accessory dwelling are on the rear of the garage slash barn. Number eight, the applicant will meet the standards of the Situate zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit where there is Title V compliance from the board of health. So that's the findings of fact.
Okay, any discussion on it? One comment, and I'm going back, I forget what number it was, where you talked about prior to being occupied? And the question is, is that, is that a statement we can make?
Yeah.
I mean, they, they may be able to occupy right now, we don't know that, right?
Well, in the house now...
It says here, "The septic system must be in compliance with Title V prior to the primary unit or the accessory unit being occupied."
And that's my question, that's what, that's what we've said, but the question is...
That's exactly what the, I'm sorry. That's what the health director says, she says, "The septic system must be in compliance with Title V prior," and it's bold and capitalized, "to the unit being rented."
Okay.
So it can't even be rented, let alone occupied.
Okay, good. Do we have a second on the findings of fact?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, now is for the conditioned approval. I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at 330 Gannett Road with the following conditions, and standard conditions for accessory dwelling approved by the planning board after a public hearing on December 17th, 2015. Number one, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plan submitted with the application. Number two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Number three, the new approved septic system plan by Morse Engineering shall be approved by the board of health prior to releasing this special permit to the applicant. This special permit is not valid without a board of health Title V approval. Number four, fire department and building department inspections are necessary to ensure code violations do not exist. Compliance with these inspections is a condition of this permit. Number five, the standard conditions for the accessory dwelling approved by the planning board shall be conditions of this decision, and shall be included for recording at the registry of deeds.
A second? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's it?
That's it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
Public hearing for accessory dwelling special permit, 251 Haveli.
We're going to get our, our full bench strength back here.
This one's going to be difficult.
It is?
Hello, sir? Great to be back. Yeah, it is. It's a much better view from up here.
Seriously.
I was impressed you had that all taped up.
Give us a second to get the re-erase.
Do I need to sign?
I can't do it. I know, I can't do it. Okay. You're good.
I'll sit. Okay. Okay, this is accessory dwelling special permit, public hearing for 251 Haveli Road. I take it you are the...
DeBarros? Yes.
Please introduce yourself, and tell us what it is you're looking to do.
I'm limited on English, so my daughter-in-law can't talk in the...
That's fine, great.
Hi, so this is Antonio, I'm Evette, his daughter-in-law. So what he's looking to do is, he has like an in-law unit attached to his current property, so he'd like to legalize it, so that his kid... so he'd like to legalize it so that his kids could live in it at the time, or when he gets older, they can move into the main property and he can live into the accessory dwelling.
Okay, great. And we have quite a package of information here. Maybe we could ask Laura to give us her review, then we'll go to questions from the board.
I'm looking for the area that I believe is 700 square feet.
How much is it?
757 square feet. So, right now, there is a unit that exists already. It's contained within the house and it actually, on the application, it says the floor area of the primary dwelling is 4,054 square feet, but that includes the unit, so you have to figure it out. But it still comes to something like 23% of the area.
So well to the 40%.
Completely complying and it certainly looks like it has a very nice new modern kitchen, which is just on the side, and because they did put this nice photograph in, and there's also plenty of parking, so it seems like it's, it's a very straightforward application.
And as far as infrastructure?
I believe it's on sewer.
Yes, correct.
Sewer?
Yeah.
Okay. And town water?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
It looks, I'm looking at the pictures that Laura, this one here, looks like there's plenty of parking as well in front there. How many, what is that? At least four?
Yeah, so four cars can fit in the driveway.
Is that you in that picture?
Probably, that's my...
It's the corner.
Yeah. And my car.
Yeah, I don't have any, I think the packets seem to be pretty self-explanatory.
No, all applications should be just complete.
Right.
Laura, did I misunderstand, but did you already, did you say there's already a second unit within the main dwelling?
The, no, not a second.
This unit is in the main dwelling.
Oh, it's within the main dwelling. I beg your pardon. So we're only talking about a total of one main dwelling and one accessory dwelling?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm good.
No, again, well done. It's all here and it all follows the rules.
Yeah.
I think it's terrific. Let's go for it.
I do have, I do have a couple of questions.
And there's a question from the public.
I see that. Just want to be clear, how do you get in and out of this?
There's two ways. So there's a back deck that connects to both the main dwelling and it has a private entrance to the accessory dwelling, and then there's also an entrance through the main dwelling. So there's a closet that connects the two, so you can get in through the main dwelling or through a private entrance.
So where's the deck entrance on this drawing? Is this it up here?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So this goes out to a deck that has stairs that go...
Exactly.
Yes, okay, great.
And then where it says kitchen dining room, that's the one that connects to, through the closet?
So that long room in the front, it's like a sunroom.
This room.
That's where it connects to the main dwelling area.
That's this room down here.
Yeah, exactly. So there's a little opening right there.
Okay. Okay, great. And, yeah, I think, I think that's all the questions I have. I saw we had questions from...
I have a question.
Public?
Okay.
Could you identify yourself, please?
My name's Charles Colley. I'm a neighbor. And my question is, you say that you have adequate space for cars, which you know and I know is wrong. You have cars parked on the street all the time. Right now, if you go by your house, it's two cars parked on the street. Correct? Correct?
But I guess...
Excuse me, it's a point of order.
Yes.
I think under the circumstances, his concerns should be addressed to the board rather than to the applicant.
Oh, okay.
Because that's, that's how it should be. It gets too contentious.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay. And how do I go about that?
Just say what you're saying, but just...
You can correct your comments.
Okay.
Talk to Mr. Pritchard.
I'm a neighbor, and if, if they have adequate space, if they're going to bring their sandwich, that doesn't bother me, however they do it. But the space in the cars is my concern for the fact that they say they have adequate space for the cars, that people that are going to be living in the house, which is right now is false, because if you go by their house right now, because I just went by there before I came here, there's two cars parked in the street, and that's right now. And in the summertime, it's totally more, all, all the time, all the time. And there's been numerous complaints about the cars and all the people hanging in the street. The police have been called numerous times for all this. Now, if they're allowed, they have more people living in the residence, there's going to be more issues on the cars parked in the street and all the people there. That is my concern. I have two small children, and it's been a concern for the last few summers.
Seems to be getting worse.
Okay, thank you. Laura, did you take a look at the parking at all?
I, I did not. One of the standard conditions for the, for all the accessory dwellings is that you can't park on the street. So I don't know if Tavarez knew that or not, but that's like just part and parcel of having an accessory dwelling and having it legalized through the town is that you can't park out on the street.
So the parking...
All your parking, you know, inside on the property.
But the parking requirements are for two cars for the primary dwelling and two cars for the accessory dwelling?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you've got four parking spaces on your site, you meet the requirements?
Yeah, but I don't think we're talking about the requirements. I think we're talking about the actual use of the property, because...
How can, how...
You could have a lot of bedrooms.
How can we control use of the property, though?
Through a condition, which you, you always do.
Yeah, we would normally put that condition in, right? I guess the question was, is there for the, the standard, you know, single-family home and accessory dwelling, are there enough parking spaces to accommodate that?
Right. That's, I think that's where I was getting to, right? You know, to meet the requirements.
Or do, should we, I mean, does there need to be more, I guess, is the question?
I mean, I think it would depend on how many people are living on the property, which you know, who have cars, and I certainly don't know that, and I have not been by it.
If I, if I may, the condition is no parking on the street for four cars. The planning board has no control over how many people live in that house. We have no idea how many people are in that house, and we have no control over whomever might park on the street. We don't, that is not the purview. We, our conditions are two cars for each section to be parked on the property. Is that not correct?
Actually, you have a standard condition that says no...
No parking on the street. So that...
Blanket kind of thing.
It's a blanket kind of thing.
Which applies to the primary and the accessory dwelling.
That's right. But we have no control over guests.
No.
We have no control over any of that. That would be an enforcement issue if there are no parking signs on Haveli Road. That would be a police issue, not our issue.
It would be enforceable to the extent that the parking was on the street that was due to the accessory dwelling.
Right.
Right.
Right, exactly.
Right, and if it's not...
Which is a level of protection that doesn't exist now.
And this gives it more protection, does it not?
Yeah. Is there a garage in the building?
Sorry?
Is there a garage to the house?
No, there's no garage. It's just a driveway.
So and the, and the driveway, like for the four spaces, you would have to park behind the, there're two, and then two more behind it, so...
In tandem?
Tandem, yeah.
Are you prepared to do that?
Yeah, so right now, so I'll just clarify a little bit. So we have four cars who, who are in the driveway. There's five cars total who are there, so we can easily park four cars in the driveway, and one does park on the street. However, there are going to be people who are moving out, so we're going to lose two cars, so there will only be three cars. There's not anyone new moving in. Whoever's there will stay there. There, my husband and I have been staying there since we sold our house, but we're moving out, so there'll only be three cars at that time of people who live there. Again, people could come by, but for the people who live there, there's going to be three cars.
And so you're prepared to make sure that they all park in the designated parking areas on the property, not on the street?
So Martha, we have to park in the driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Any other? I think we should entertain a motion at this point. Okay.
Accessory dwelling special permit, 251 Haveli Road. The first part is just the findings of fact. So I move to make the following findings of fact. Number one, according to the town of Situate assessor's records, the property at 251 Haveli Road is owned by Antonio and Maria Tavarez. The property is located in the residential R3 zoning district on a lot of 10,000 square feet. Number two, on March 16th, 2016, Antonio Tavarez applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling within a single-family home on the property, excuse me, on the property at 251 Haveli Road. Number three, based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the interior floor space of the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately 757 square feet. This meets the size requirements of 520, I'm sorry, 530 dot 2F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings, as it is less than 40% of the floor area of the primary dwelling, which is estimated to be 3,297 square feet. 4,054 square feet total area from the assessor's card, less the 500, oh, I'm sorry, 757 square feet. Number four, Google Earth shows the dwelling to have a paved driveway with room for four cars. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and ample parking for the primary dwelling. Number five, the owner has submitted a signed notarized statement that he will live on the property in the primary unit. Number six, the property is on town sewer. Number seven, exterior stairs to the accessory dwelling are on the side deck. Number eight, the application meets the standards of the Situate zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit. So that's the close of the findings of fact.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. The next step is the approval, or motion for the approval. And this is where the condition will be for the, the no off-street, right?
I think it might be in the standard conditions.
Conditions, oh, that's, okay. So I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at 251 Haveli Road with the following conditions and the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after a public hearing on December 17th, 2015. Number one, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plan submitted with the application. Number two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Number three, fire department and building department inspections are necessary to ensure code violations do not exist. Compliance with these inspections is a condition of this permit. And number four, the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board shall be conditions of this decision and shall be included for recording at the registry of deeds. And that is the end.
Okay. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So this gets filed with the town clerk, and then it's a 20-day period.
Okay.
And just for, in case you didn't pick that up, the standard conditions from the planning board are attached to this approval, and one of those standard conditions is a requirement that all parking is on the property. No off-street, no street parking.
Yeah, by, by the way, they don't park on Haveli. They all park on Egger Road.
Egger Road.
Because our driveway is off Egger.
They're locking up and down there as we speak.
Again, we can, we can condition the accessory dwelling permit that requires the parking on the, we cannot police...
No, I understand. My, my whole thing is in the, their living conditions. That's, I don't, that doesn't bother me. It's the parking on the street. That's my whole, you know, whole, like the safety thing, because if a fire truck can't get down there, if they're coming off Haveli to go down Egger, they're not going to be able to make the turn with all the cars parked there.
Steve?
Yes.
I would make a suggestion that if this is a continuing issue of, respective of the special permit that we just approved, that if someone has a concern about excess parking, they go to traffic laws and regulations and have them deal with the situation. And then that...
Excellent suggestion.
...resolve the issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
And maybe, maybe they would address things like no parking signs or something like that.
Yes, so that, that's...
Right, if there, if there aren't already, I mean, are there no parking signs?
But I think that that is probably...
Seems like that might be appropriate.
Yes.
Dayton Road, all Dayton and Egger, and it's happened if you've talked to the fire department, because I have a handicapped brother that they go to often, they have to go around the other way.
I really think it's in the purview, traffic laws.
We appreciate you bringing it up, and we would suggest taking it to another...
Yeah, that's my whole, the, the fire trucks and ambulance is not getting on the street.
Sure, absolutely.
That's a big issue.
And that's, I think that's, right, but I think that that's where you find, you may find relief.
Well, it's not, it's not an exact situation, but we had a little while ago where the Inlee School, there was neighbors complaining about the parking there.
Yep.
And I've gone up there several times recently, and there are no parking signs now posted, and I have not seen anyone parking on the street, so it, sometimes it just takes them to, it makes people aware of the situation.
Situation.
Yeah.
You're a little closer to the beach, though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to tell you, I don't understand this one at all.
Okay. Scenic Road Public Hearing, the 101 border street.
I drove by that.
We don't have a lot of visual aids for this, do we?
I drove by it.
Oh, do we? Okay.
The picture of the tire wall.
I haven't been following this.
And now there's a trench.
I think this was, that was the existing one, or that's the new one.
The proposed style of the new one?
I think, yeah.
And the existing one's probably just an old farmer's wall, right?
What?
No, it was actually a nice wall.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Steve, can you angle out a little over this way?
I'm trying to find, I might not, I might not have that one.
I'm sorry, you can scunch by me on the other side.
Yeah, that was the one I was looking for right there.
Oh, okay.
That's the original?
This is the original wall.
And what, what's proposal? Do we have pictures?
There's, there's other pictures in there. It's, it's a little more kind of...
Kind of looks like that.
Pull together looking.
Yeah, it's a little more...
So it's less, it's less structured?
Pull together looking, structured.
Less casual.
What was the, is it transmitted?
Maybe you just want to explain.
Okay, why don't you, why don't we get started and let you have the floor first, and first of all, identify yourselves, and then...
My, my name is Paul McCarthy. I have been asked by the customer, the owner of the property, who does not live in this country, to, to come on her behalf, their behalf, and answer any and all questions that you might have. They found that the wall, I understand it was a good-looking wall, but it also, it's a very sharp turn. She's the one who went forward, and there's a big sign there now for that, this is a the one who went forward, and there's a big sign there now for that, this is a very sharp, dangerous corner. Well, the wall had been hit twice, so the wall had been put back together twice, and it was in, in disarray. Um, I do, do apologize that no permit was pulled. Uh, I'm actually a construction superintendent in the state of Massachusetts, and I'm a real estate, I have a license in the, in the state of Massachusetts, and I did not know a scenic road. I understand it. It's, you know, they pull over and they take pictures of the deers, they look at the turkeys. Uh, it's constantly, you know, it's a nice road. I understand it.
It's primarily about the trees and the stone walls.
Yes. But, uh, we had two other bids, and no one ever brought it to, to my attention that this might be, you know, a scenic road. So she felt terrible about it. Um, she immediately filed everything she could. She paid, uh, the, you know, the fees in order to get this hearing in, in order. Um, and that's really what they, they're all about. They just want to make sure they're doing it right.
So has this wall been already constructed?
No.
Oh, okay.
So nothing new has gone in place yet?
Right.
Just a trench.
Okay.
A gravel-filled trench.
And so you have, do you have plans, or do you have something that shows us what is proposed here?
So, excuse me, my name is Troy Ginter. I'm the owner of Natural Stonewall Solutions. Uh, we were contacted by the owner to replace this wall with a, you know, a New England-style field stone wall. So...
Is it just the 66 feet along the road, or is it also the, what is that?
There's
Stretch that runs back
There's about 40 feet that goes perpendicular to the side of her house.
46 feet into the property.
Yeah, they're, it's somewhat a retaining wall.
So in fact, all you are looking for is the permitting concern with the 66 feet along the road?
Correct. Because the road, as, as Paul mentioned, is a sharp curve. Um, there's a, there was a unique, or there was a specific section of wall of 60, 66 feet long, started at the end of the driveway and ended near the end of their property, and then it's just kind of woods, I guess, if it's, if you're heading south on Border Road.
Does this solve any of the problems of the sharp curve and people hitting the wall, or is it simply?
It's a structural wall, and it's a little bit taller. So if someone hits it, it's, it's not going to break it. It's not going to fall apart. It's going to
It's going to break their car.
It's going to ruin a bumper.
Right, yeah.
As well it should.
She's deeply, so, um, it's a structural wall, and it's a little bit taller, so it's not really reproducing what was there.
Well, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's New England native field stone. Uh, everything comes from, we're from Concord, Mass. Um, I came down here, I think it was almost during Christmas, to meet her. Uh, they're not in the country much, so, um, she definitely wanted something similar in style, uh, similar to New England. So it's all reclaimed stone. Um, and like I said, it's, I think the old wall
Is it like this field stone wall, like what was there? This, this is a picture?
I have a picture.
We actually have, I have two pictures of a proposed, I don't, but where is that coming from?
So, um, a small tidbit about our company, we've got a patented product. Um, her wall is built and sitting in our yard in Concord, Mass.
Oh, so it's pre
It's, um, correct. So, um,
Proposed wall.
So it's a seamless application when we're done, but everything right now is currently built and stored in Concord, Mass.
You want to pass down? This is the new proposed wall.
You have, I brought a couple of copies.
So the material that was on site, where, where did that?
Uh, that went to, uh, pump instruction.
Oh, okay.
Took it and, um,
So that looks like that's about four feet high?
No, it's only three feet.
Three feet.
The old wall is only 20 inches.
I don't know if I like it.
So it's blind mortared?
This type over here.
Okay, yeah.
A bunch of different types.
Oh, all right, yeah, yeah.
So this will all be straightened out? It won't be?
Yeah.
Oh, correct. Oh, yeah.
All right, fine, gotcha.
These are just the sections, right?
So other than, what, what did we call it the last time we had this issue? A rubble wall?
A farmer's wall.
Yeah.
A rubble.
Rubble, rubble.
Rubble.
Rubble, farmers.
Yeah, right. Which is just a bunch of stones piled next to each other.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is, is a little more formal. But, you know, we had that conversation about the, uh,
That was
That other property, and the interesting
That wall was too nice.
It was, well, that was the allegation. But I, I went and traveled along Border Street, and in that stretch, there are probably a half a dozen completely different styles of stone wall. You can't say one is any better or worse than another, or one's trying to match another, because there really are a lot of different ones.
Unfortunately, we don't have the opportunity to make that decision.
No, no, got it.
Decision's been made for us.
Right, right. I mean, they're there. They've, some of them have been there for 100 years or 20.
Well, no, I mean, this particular wall has already been ripped out.
Oh, I see.
Well, yeah, you can
That wall's gone.
Right, sorry. If you do like an alt-tab, I've got the two pictures. Now, I can't do it backwards, but...
Then don't do it backwards.
Come on, Richard.
Yeah. So there's, there was the existing one, and there's the new proposal.
I can't see.
So existing, sorry.
It's a bad angle.
Then we'll need our own iPad.
Well, you, you work, you work for a company who could supply that? Right.
How was this held together? They just
Um, I, I think the easiest way we, we tell people is, um, are you familiar with, like, biscuit systems for cables?
Yes, yep.
Where each side has a hollow?
Mm-hmm.
So our, all of our walls are engineered structurally. Uh, they have hollow cores at the joints, and that part is concreted in. And, um, we leave a shelf for a nice, similar field stone. It's about a nine-inch shelf, and the stone's set in that, in that void.
You know, what would be somewhat interesting is to have a picture of this piece of wall right here on the other side of the driveway. But we don't.
I think it's the same wall.
Do you have any more pictures?
Is the wall that, that's going perpendicular to the house, going down the side, is that going to be the same?
Correct. Uh, a little bit shorter. It's really more of a retaining wall. And a wall on the high side of the driveway isn't on the property.
Right.
I don't think that's, that was never part.
Yeah, it was just interesting to see if it had a relationship, design-wise, to what you're proposing.
When you're saying a retaining wall, though, that there's nothing, there's no fill being brought in?
Uh, the, the wall along Border Road is just a freestanding wall to replace. The one that's going back, um, they have a, uh, six to eight inch height of material. It's kind of, it's on the edge of their slope, so I think the freestanding wall retains a piece of stone walkway. That, there's, there's not much retaining capabilities of that, of what they're doing.
Was there a wall there before?
Yes.
There was a couple of, yes, yes.
Yes.
When you drive through this section of Border Street, like Bob was saying, there are a lot of walls. None of them have that old New England look. They're all kind of formal, you know, a little stiff-looking. Well, this one, no, when you see how it's going to look when it's done, I mean, to me, it looks, it's formal.
Yeah, it's, it's similar hues, it's similar hues and colors of the, of everything else, you know. I, I, I did drive by south of her place, and there was walls that are one stone in the ground, and there's some walls that are stacked yellow and pink granite that, I mean, like, like I said, they're all over the place.
Almost anything you could want to see.
Ours is, you know, it's a natural New England field stone. Um, they have moss on it, they have lichen, um, very similar color. Uh, that's what she went with it. She wanted to be similar to, I mean, her original intent was just, I want something more that's not going to fall apart, but it's going to look nice in this, this condition. And so that's...
It looks like the stone wall in front of Bleaky's property further up the road. So it's, uh, it's in keeping with what's there.
But the, the old wall's gone.
Correct, yeah.
It was taken away.
It wasn't a real old wall. I mean, it was one that looked like it had been built maybe five years ago.
I think Dick Walsh might have done
Maybe, so, maybe, I think after accidents, it might have
Looked, looked a little more rugged.
Since I've been looking here, that he came in and got the common driveway approved and separate ones.
Just out of curiosity, what did you do with those stones? Take them back to Concord for reprocessing?
No. Um, it was, it was a lot of sharp rock, and, um, we dealt with a local contractor, Hub. They took it away. I think they're, you know, getting crushed up.
Well, yeah, it's interesting.
It's okay with me.
It's almost like from above, you know, it's not the side. It's like they're really looking more above the, the width.
But I mean, you see how sharp all these stones are.
Pretty cool.
I know. Did you use a crane?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Pins or dowels or anything into the footing?
Uh, it's, it's gravity, I mean, they're 9,000 pounds a section, so.
Okay, we were trying not to hit that with a car.
Yeah, that would wreck a bumper.
We had a drunk driver go through one of our other properties up in Redding, which is a picket fence. That, it was during the estimate phase, so he was thinking about it. And then when that happened, he called us the next morning. Went right through where his kids play.
So a lot of that happening.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? So what's the, for his pleasure here?
Ready for a motion?
Do you have a motion?
I will have to say that this, this is probably okay, but, you know, one of the things that we certainly don't appreciate is addressing these issues after the fact. It almost makes the scenic road permit superfluous, and it leads to, you know, this haphazard development of stone walls up and down the street, probably. People ask for forgiveness rather than permission.
That is true.
And, you know, I just, uh, it probably won't change any decision here, but it is something that we need to be much more cognizant of, um, because we can't be addressing these issues after the fact. I mean, if we didn't like this wall, you know, we could, we could ask you to remove this wall and put the old wall back, um, which would not be good for anybody. Um, but I think as a board, I'm speaking for myself anyway, um, I don't appreciate sort of going through the, the process after the fact. That, that's not what it says, and that's not, in fact, what the state law says.
Right.
It's supposed to be pre-approval. Um, and I wish you would relay that back to, to the owner here. With that said...
We carry it forward to your next gentleman.
They have, can I chip in? Um, if you're working in this field, you really, I'm, I'm surprised that you're not familiar with scenic roads, because they're going to impact the work that you do all across the state. I mean, whenever you're taking out a stone wall and replacing it, you have to find out and make sure that it's not a scenic road. The, the property owner's from the Netherlands. I wouldn't expect her to know if, you know, anything about scenic roads, or New England, or stone walls. But I think she kind of depends on you guys.
She did.
Understood.
Yeah. And it is, it is not just a local ordinance, it's state law.
Right.
Especially Concord. That's a very nice scenic area. Uh, anyway, okay. Um, I move to close. Actually, did we ask if there was any other comment? This is the public hearing.
I'm sure. Any, anybody here for 101 Border Street? Any comments? No?
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, I move to close the Scenic Road Act public hearing and to approve the post-application removal of 66 linear feet of stone wall at the right-of-way of Borders, uh, Border Street and House Number 101. The stone wall is proposed to be rebuilt by Natural Stonewall Solutions. New England round field stones shall be used. Uh, the wall is to be located in its original layout. Notification shall be provided to the town planner when the work commences and when the work is complete.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I believe they do, yes. We may even have a copy of it.
Okay.
We notify you then for the schedule? I want to make sure we
Yeah.
Call you, okay.
Laura, I actually have a copy of your card right here.
Oh, okay, great.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't understand.
Pretty soon we can send people down to Border Street.
Yeah, pick one.
Pick a wall.
The wall you like. He does walls on outdoors.
Okay. But it's not about the turkeys.
No, it is about the turkeys.
Damn. The walls and the trees.
Turkeys and a deer.
He was confused between scenic and scenery.
I don't understand.
Okay, um, we have a form A for 96 Stockbridge Road. Are there proponents here?
I've submitted, um, a plan, and I will
Can you identify by yourself?
And I'm Dick Dandictis.
I think I have one, actually. I'll pass this on.
Anyway, so we, we submitted, this is kind of a leftover situation from the 40B that was Stockbridge Landing. Um, it's, it's the L-shaped parcel, and I got to highlight it here, which is So, um, it's that L-shaped piece at the bottom. You see it here? The, which is the drawing. Uh, that piece there, it's, uh, it's 2.4 acres. Uh, and it's not part of the 40B that was approved by the zoning board of the year. And, uh, it's only by Stockbridge Realty. Uh, Mr. Pia Cole is here from Stockbridge Realty. And, uh, basically, we're just trying to One of the things she suggested, which we immediately was, was make, uh, that, that lot, that trade lot, we created that. That was going to be an easement, but we realized that there's a bylaw against doing more than 2,500 square feet on a lot. So we made that as, as an actual non-buildable, a rain plot, and that will be sold to the same people who are doing the 40B. So, um, so this is just a, a clean, you know, whole lot situation. It's got the 100 feet, it's got at least 20,000 square feet. And it's got, as I said, of course, 2.4 acres.
Dick, the one, the one-dimensional thing that I might question, Dick, is whether or not there's 125 feet through the house at any given point in this lot.
Right. Um, this is an This is a 40, so you can
Okay, so double that?
It's actually parallel. You see it? It's 132, but that's at an angle.
Right.
So it's, um, yeah, double that.
Yeah, okay, so...
Those lines are actually setback lines that you see there, the bottom lines.
40, 80, right.
The house is coming out, though, right?
Yeah, yeah, but you gotta have, you gotta have a spot to put a house that's got 125 feet. So 40, 50, 60, just about. Yeah, you got 100, yeah, okay. Yeah, all right.
So the, uh, a house to be built would probably be up in this area.
Yeah, right.
And that's, uh, like a farm or workshop.
Yeah.
Will it be in the water resource protection district of the house?
But it can't be
It could be, it could be within that 50 feet of It will be in the second 100 feet, not the first 100.
Well, this is a Zone A, though. This is a Zone A. This isn't just wetlands, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And also the town has the 150 foot setback from the tributary, which is kind of
And that, that line you're looking at, that's going to the corner of that building, it's 200 feet. So 150 foot is coming back, is back here.
Okay.
This, this is Zone A? This is the limit of Zone A here?
Yeah, the 200 foot is the, um,
Right here.
It's this line, which, which basically, you, you, the town had the water resources district, and this is another, you know, this is our bottom line discussed. We originally had it coming across here, but you reminded me that, really, you have the 200-foot tributary. So you, so it comes here, and then it picks up again here, because this is, this is basically water resources, too. So in other words, this, this line is this way now, and then it comes, picks up again over here. This is your line. This is the state's tributary line.
Okay, so assuming
Where's the be-buildable location?
It'd be in this area right there.
It's not really shown, because it's just, you know, these are really just based on frontage and access.
Right. What we're doing is approving the lot, not, not approving a building on the lot.
Yeah, but we want to make sure there's a place to build something on this, right?
Yeah, but I'm not sure we couldn't approve it even if there weren't.
You don't need to. You give people too much information, which is...
It does affect you.
It does. You know, the less said, and give them the handout, if anybody raises their hand or comes to the mic and questions whatever, what is the difference between, and it's just, this was a wordage, wordsmithing issue and that, let it go with that. Otherwise, you get people too confused. And when they get confused, they vote no.
Right. I mean, it hardly, it hardly rises above the standard of a typo correction.
Right.
It's not changing the meaning for any...
No, it's not changing. So, it's better to...
But the whole language is new, right?
No.
No, just the stuff that's underlined.
Just the underlying part on the handout is, there was some letters and the word there. It was like RE was the only thing that came through and then there was a phrase out of the other part.
Yeah, that's...
So, I mean, you could almost get away without doing it at all, but...
No, this is, this is better. Yeah. You'd just have to change it later.
Yeah. So, this is going to be with a sunray that I looked down with Steve and I think we're both happy with now. I think Steve's happy.
How long is Steve's hat?
She's looking at you, Steve. Not Steve Bajor.
I was just trying to be clear about what we add and where we're going with each one of this, right? And I think that's, what you don't want to create is confusion.
Right.
Or just be, you know, just be clear. And I think, I think, I think we're there. In fact, I actually think the bullet for the standards for land subject to coastal storm flowage might suggest there's a bigger change than there actually is, right? So, even on the sunray, right?
Yeah. I mean, I thought about leaving it out entirely, but then someone's going to find it and they're going to say, hey, what about this?
No, I wasn't suggesting that. I'm just, I'm just wondering if this language needs to sort of suggest that, you know, that the standards, that, that the language around coastal storm flowage already exists and all we're doing is adding the ability to create standards, right?
Well, that language actually doesn't exist now. That was put in, and that's why I...
This language doesn't exist now?
Well, it's in the new version, but that language is all new. That's, it's...
That was, that was my point before. Okay. So, it's not that we've added these few little words. We've added the whole paragraph.
Whole paragraph.
You added it back in, like, Jim.
But it's always been in, so...
It's been in the new draft.
It's in the new draft. It hasn't been, it's not an existing standard.
No, it's not an existing standard.
So, then this is appropriate, then? What you just said.
No, this is changing the already published in the, what, what was the...
Advisory booklet.
The advisory booklet. So, except for the changes underlined, this is in public record as part of the advisory booklet.
Right. But this is a proposal.
Correct, right. As, as...
That's what I was trying to be clear.
As a lot, as a lot of the stuff that we're, we're putting out there is a proposal, yeah.
It's, it could be something where you're just going to have general language about not obstructing the flow of storm, of floodwater under a building. I mean, it could be pretty general. I think we really just don't know. It's probably not going to involve any kind of calculations because you'd be talking about calculating, you know, the volume of flooding that's coming onto a property and you can't really do that.
But it will create the ability to put out a standard that people will have to adhere to.
Yeah, I mean...
It'll be case by case. It'll be, it'll be a case by case condition.
Like, you can store propane tanks under your, under your elevated house because they're going to, you know...
Well, or they need to have tie-downs.
Yeah.
Or whatever, yeah. Yep. And conservation is going to have a lot of enforcement in this area as well.
Yeah, and they could be, you know, in fact, I was thinking it might be a good thing for all of us to delegate creating these regulations to this new coastal advisory commission or conservation.
Yep.
Or somebody that just loves coastal...
Right. But my point is, we're talking about creating a set of performance standards. We're not talking about doing a case by case thing. We're talking about creating a set of performance standards.
Yeah.
That's what this language is, is identifying.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so these would be the two handouts. I was, you know, I'm trying not to get too carried away with graphic-type stuff, but I was thinking maybe light blue for the stormwater and, you know, something bright for the non-criminal, like an orange or something.
Orange.
Yeah.
Like the...
Orange is the new black.
Is there, I'm actually looking at the warrant right now, too. Is there any explanation of like how this came about or why these changes? Like, if I'm just like Joe Average?
I have a little write-up here on that, right?
Is there? Okay, like, there was a committee formed and all that? Okay.
Yeah, I gave Steve a write-out that, you know...
Which I'm hoping you're going to send to me electronically.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Because I might want to tweak it a little bit.
Who's presenting this at town meeting, Steve?
I think that's the...
The plan?
And now we know that the 2,500 square feet of drainage can go with the 40B. So that's why we created another little lot there. So that's gonna go with them. The Form A is gonna stay with us for future application, which at the most will be a one or maybe a two family. Could happen there'll be two family under the Planning Board rule today, which are two acres, I guess you guys would not be too against that, if the conservation issue can be overcome. And that's it. All right?
Yeah, I was just trying to get, just be clear is, we're not really addressing the 40B development at all.
No.
My question was, and I was surprised to see the zoning board of appeals decision on this, is this parcel part of the original layout or any expectation of the 40B?
It wasn't ever part of the 40B.
No, it was never.
But before they proposed the 40B, it was all in parcel.
So there's nothing in the 40B approval that links to this piece?
No.
Okay. That's all I was just trying to get at. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just curious as to why it wasn't part, I know it doesn't matter, but why wasn't it part of the whole 40B?
Well, it was not necessary.
Wasn't needed?
When you develop land, you try to maximum, you know, recovery on using your land to the maximum potential to obtain an additional house or two. In this case, financially, of course, it's been a very difficult burden. I studied this project, that was one-third of 25%. I have other partners. You know, over the last 15 years, they all went bankrupt and left and everything else. So Dr. Tsai, who could not be here tonight, and myself are the last two carrying the banner and going uphill and hopefully finishing it. So why it was not included, it was a smart move on my engineers, I guess, the design.
Well, primarily, I'll show you the second page. This 29 sheets, this is the bottom part of the development. All the development, the land, all the hosing is up way beyond this area here. This is just the roadway in, and we had to cross an intermittent stream, we had to do conservation here. So all the, all the--
But this is the lot over here that's separate.
This is just the bottom half, there's a lot more up here. But all the development, all the homes are up here. There's nothing on this road coming in. If that took away, it worked out from a point of view, it made sense.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that. All right. We got that. Other questions? Okay. All right. Form A for 96 Stockbridge Road. I move to endorse, as approval under the subdivision control law not required, a plan of land in Situate, Massachusetts, showing a division of parcel 54-2-28 into three lots, which consists of 54-2-28A, 54-2-28B, and 54-2-28C, prepared by Webby Engineering Associates Incorporated for Stockbridge Two Realty Trust, Pierre Cole, trustee, revised date April 4, 2016. As the division of the tract of land shown is not a subdivision because Lot 54-2-28B, as shown on the plan, has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Stockbridge Road. Lot 54-2-28A is a lot where a 40B comprehensive permit has been approved by the zoning board of appeals and is not required to have the required frontage. And Lot 54-2-28C is not a buildable lot in its current configuration, and so it is noted on the plan.
One second.
Oh, is it favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do you have any cue, Emma?
Good luck.
All right. In the circular sign. Bada bing bada bum. Bada bing. Rectangle sign.
The original seven-house subdivision, if they couldn't get to--
What's that?
The 40B, these properties, the seven-lot subdivision, they couldn't get it through because of the grid. You remember that by twenty hours.
Yeah.
Seven houses.
Really?
It's a decrease since construction. It's been a thousand houses. Now it's dominated.
Yeah. Seventy, seventy-something now. It was more before.
Thank you.
I think they would have to do with all five.
Okay.
So that's gone.
Sorry, I keep driving on Stockbridge, you're always wondering, like, I look over there, I'm like, is it gonna start construction? Like you said, it's been a long time.
Long time. We're all older and hopefully wiser.
I've managed to get one out of two.
Yeah, really. It's pretty cool. That's pretty cool.
So, wanna walk us through the--
Storewater.
Still in line.
Reboot.
Okay, so the section of the land subject to coastal storm flowage, there were a couple of letters that kind of dropped out and a sentence that wasn't complete, and it's just, there's so much text to kind of wade through these things. But in any case, there were a couple of little phrases that had been added, and I went to the moderator's meeting and talked to Rich Bowen, Kathy Curran, and then touched base with Tricia. Tricia sent an email to Jim Toomey. Everything seems to be going along smoothly, that he will do a motion that just says, move this article as printed in the town meeting handout. And the town meeting handout, there'll be like 450 copies of this thing at town meeting, and it'll have these little changes on it that are on this paragraph that you've got in your folders.
Now, question, I printed out the advisory booklet online that has it all there. Is that up to date?
That doesn't have this in it.
Okay. So that won't ever?
No, it won't ever, because it's been printed.
It's already gone out there, okay.
The references to the handout, it's opposed to the advisory booklet.
Yeah.
Right. And it's a handout, we're handing out with this language, right?
Yep.
Page six.
This language is gonna be incorporated in the new bylaw. It's a clean copy of the bylaw, and it's gonna have this in it.
But will it be--
But are you gonna call it out?
Yeah, say like in red, like this, what's changed?
Um, I hadn't thought of doing that. I don't think you need to.
You don't need to. You give people too much information.
It's just to fight you.
It does. You know, the less set, give them the handout, if anybody raises their hand or comes to the mic and questions whatever, what is the difference between, and it's just, this was a wordage, wordsmithing issue, and that, let it go with that. Otherwise, you get people too confused, and when they get confused, they vote no.
Right. I mean, it hardly, it hardly rises above the standard of a typo correction.
Right.
It's not changing the meaning for any--
No, it's not changing. So it's better--
But the whole language is new, right?
No.
No, just the stuff that's underlined.
Just the underlying part on the handout is--
Just that and that.
There's the letters and the word there. It was like RE was the only thing that came through, and then there was a phrase--
Oh, okay.
Out of the other part.
Yeah, that's--
So, I mean, you could almost get away without doing it at all, but--
No, this is, this is better. Yeah. You'd just have to change it later.
Yeah. So this is gonna be with a summary that I worked on with Steve, and I think we're both happy with now. I think Steve's happy.
How long is Steve's?
She's looking at you, Steve. Not Steve, but you're--
I was just trying to be clear about what we had and where we're going with each one of this, right? And I think that's, what you don't wanna create is confusion.
Right.
Or just be, you know, just be clear. I think, I think, I think we're there, right? In fact, I actually think the bullet for the standards for land subject to coastal storm flowage might suggest there's a bigger change than there actually is, right? So--
Yeah.
Even on the summary, right?
Yeah. I mean, I thought about leaving it out entirely, but then someone's gonna find it, and they're gonna say, hey, what about this--
No, I wasn't suggesting that. I'm just, I'm just wondering if this language needs to sort of suggest that, you know, that the standards, that, that the language around coastal storm flowage already exists, and all we're doing is adding the ability to create standards. Right?
Well, that language actually doesn't exist now. Ooh. That was put in, and that's why--
This language doesn't exist now?
Well, it's in the new version, but that language is all new. That's--
That was, that was my point before. Okay. So it's not that we've added these few little words. We've added the whole paragraph.
Whole paragraph.
You added it back in--
But it's always been in, so--
It's been in the new draft.
It's in the new draft. It hasn't been, it's not an existing standard.
No, it's not an existing standard.
So then this is appropriate, then? What you just said.
No, this is changing the already published in the, what was the--
Advisory booklet.
The advisory booklet. So, except for the changes underlined, this is in public record as part of the advisory booklet.
Right. But this is a proposal.
Correct. Right. As, as--
That's what I was trying to be--
As a lot, as a lot of the stuff that we're putting out there is a proposal, yeah.
It's, it could be something where you're just gonna have general language about not obstructing the flow of storm, of floodwater under a building. I mean, it could be pretty general. I think we really just don't know. It's probably not gonna involve any kind of calculations, because you'd be talking about calculating, you know, the volume of flooding that's coming onto a property, and you can't really do that.
But it will create the ability to put out a standard that people will have to adhere to.
Yeah, I mean--
It'll be a case by case. It'll be, it'll be a case by case condition.
Or probing tanks under your, under your elevated house, because they're gonna, you know--
Well, or they need to have tie-downs.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
Yep. And conservation is gonna have a lot of enforcement in this area as well.
Yeah, and they could be, you know, in fact, I was thinking it might be a good thing for all of us to delegate creating these regulations to this new coastal advisory commission or a conservation--
Yep.
Or somebody that just loves--
Right. But my point is, we're talking about creating a set of performance standards. We're not talking about doing a case by case thing. We're talking about creating a set of performance standards.
Yeah.
That's what this language is identifying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so these would be the two handouts. I was, you know, I'm trying not to get too carried away with graphic type stuff, but I was thinking maybe light blue for the storm water and, you know, something bright for the noncriminal, like an orange or something.
Orange.
Yeah.
Like the--
Orange is the new black.
Is there, I'm actually looking at the warrant right now, too. Is there any explanation of like how this came about or why these changes? If I'm just like Joe average?
I have a little write-up here on that, right?
Is there? Okay, like, there was a committee formed and all that, okay?
Yeah, I gave Steve a write-out that, you know--
Which I'm hoping you're gonna send to me electronically.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah. Because I might wanna tweak a little bit.
Who's presenting this at town meeting? Steve?
I think that's the--
The plan?
The plan.
All right.
I was just looking for it, Richard's, I have it here somewhere. I saw it when I walked in. It's in my, in my pile here.
You would--
I don't know where it is, though. So I, I think-- Would you like to hear?
Yeah, actually, I would.
What's been drafted?
Hmm, yeah.
I'd like to hear during the meeting reference.
It might be good, actually, for us to--
No, I'm only kidding. No problem.
Because I would like to actually tweak it, but this is just sort of--
What's on the table right now?
It's a little dry.
It says, "Last summer, the planning board was approached by several developers and engineers who felt the standards in the town's stormwater bylaws were unnecessarily high." And I think that was primarily for residential, right? "A stormwater working group was formed, made up of members of Conservation Commission, the planning board, the conservation officer and town planner, two developers, one local engineer, and the planning board's consulting engineer. This group held nine meetings to develop changes, proposed changes to the bylaw. The planning board discussed proposed changes at seven meetings and held a public hearing on the first, on the final draft. The developers got some changes they wanted. The board did not accept all the proposed changes, but did support many of them. The board believes the proposed bylaw is an improvement, as it clarifies some of the process and adds a mechanism for enforcement. We hope you will adopt the changes by voting in favor of Article 16." I would also point out that the proposed changes were also reviewed by the Town's Water Resources Commission and by the North and South River Watershed Association.
That's good, yeah.
It improves the process.
And this was a, this was a working group led by the town planner, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I think all those things are good, because I don't think you want it to be skewed where people think like, oh, this was just a bunch of developers that drove through these--
No, you want to make sure all the stakeholders have a chance to provide input, and we took some of it and others, you know.
Yep. Left by the wayside.
Yeah.
Good.
So if you would send me the electronic version of that?
Yeah.
Add some tweaks to it.
Okay. I had actually one more thing I wanted to talk to you all about, unless you're, you're still going?
Is that it on storm water?
That's it on storm water.
Okay.
And then on noncriminal disposition, I did talk to the police department, and the main thing I found out was kind of interesting. You can write one of these tickets and not have a fine at all. You can do it like--
Like a warning?
Like a warning. Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, you're like, going a little too fast there, but, you know. But we're just giving you a warning this time.
Yeah, I was thinking about this enforcement thing, is that we might want to explain is we have no means of sort of administrative enforcement, right? We do have a means if we decide to take it to court, right? I mean, we always sort of have that capability, but that's, that's not a preferred enforcement measure, right? That really is the last resort.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the other thing was, we got some complaints today.
What? Us?
Us, yeah. Not that, not that this is too nearly different, but you will recognize this one with all of these--
Oh, yeah, rattails.
And we had people calling and saying, how can this be that they fit four lots in there, and how is that possible? And we both think that the area that's in these rattails is contributing to the total area. I mean, this one is just over--
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sure it is.
--from here.
That's why they did it, right?
Sure.
This one's a little bigger, this one's a little bigger, but it's not, it's not so big that you could chop off this rattail. And of course, this area back here has no frontage, so it's, you know, kind of--
It's not useful.
Worthless.
Correct.
Well, it's not worth it. It's still bad.
Well, it's worthless, but you could sell it to a neighbor, or you could do other things, in theory. But it would be difficult to create four lots here and have each one have a 20,000 square feet.
You mean without the rattails?
Without the rattails. Oh, sure. Yeah, no, impossible, I would say.
You'd only get three.
Yeah.
You wouldn't get four.
What other towns do is, you know, there are different ways of handling something like this. You can require a big circle inside the lot, but you do that, and you still have the rattails. So I think the direction you'd have to go is in a formula where they look at the perimeter of the lot in relation to the area of the lot, and it can't exceed a certain, a certain ratio.
Interesting.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Have you seen that in other towns, by these regulations?
Yeah, Barnstable has it, there are other towns that have it.
I'd love to see how that's worded exactly, because that's a great idea.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's fairly common in a lot of places, isn't it? That--
I think, you know, different towns have different ways of addressing it.
The question is, can we do it administratively or regulatorily, or does it require a bylaw change?
It would have to be a bylaw change.
Yeah.
So it's something where the people in this neighborhood who are quite concerned about it, I think are gonna wanna come in and talk to you all.
Sure.
Great.
So I just want--
We didn't like this when we had to do it.
No, we don't.
But the thing is, it's a Form A.
Yep.
And it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that they can build on it.
No, but right now--
It doesn't necessarily meet zone.
Yeah, they can.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any reason--
Dimensionally, there's no reason they can't. If that's all, if that's all upland, then--
You'd be tweaking with the way the dimensions are worked out, and you couldn't, you know, you couldn't have such crazy lots. And honestly, when they don't wanna put, you know, when they've got these curves and--
That's so silly.
Just thinking about fence--
Exactly, yeah.
Fence contractor.
It gets a little crazy on the town end.
Yeah, no, it's, it's obviously nuts.
Well, then--
Do you think there's a, there's a support for eliminating this kind of crazy gerrymandering?
I think you'd have to get more dedication than you did on the accessory dwellings. I mean, the accessory dwellings, in theory, there were gonna be all these people that were gonna come and vote for it, and then they never showed up. They didn't come to the public hearing. I mean, I think you need to kind of oppress on people that they need to stay involved and really be committed.
I mean, certainly, the developing, the developer community would not be in favor of a regulation that banned this kind of thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they'd have, they'd have a fit.
Right.
But, you know, pleasing them is not--
No, no, I understand, but that's a voting block.
Not that big.
Well--
And the people--
Other organizations, I mean, the way you've got the stormwater--
It's, it's not the only voting block, but, you know--
But it becomes a larger voting block when they explain to you that what you're doing is you're preventing development of your own piece of land.
Well, that's right.
Your legacy, your less than legacy.
If I own this, then, you know, I wanna be able to--
But they waited 20 years to 25 years to come to this.
I mean, it's, it's a question of how much money are you gonna get for any one particular piece of property?
Well, it's the difference between three and four, right?
Yeah, what you hope for is that the people who sold this got what they were entitled to based on the four lots. I mean, that's not always the case.
Yeah.
So--
Yeah, somebody may have told them they could only squeeze two out of this.
Yeah, they could've told them anything.
Yeah.
They could've said, oh, we need to make such and such, and--
How many instances of this do you think you could put your hands on in town Sedgwick?
I know of one.
Yeah.
Right up at Sedgwick. That's, they created a rattail so that they would have the necessary frontage.
Well, that's, I think that's what all the--
What a 50-foot frontage lots are, are different. I mean, because those have double the, the area.
This didn't.
This is different from that.
Right. This had its half acre, but in order to have the 200-foot frontage, they had to take it from next door. It's a whole story, it doesn't matter.
Well, I think we've had a couple of Form As that are similar to this.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've seen it a couple times.
We've done it to determine capacity.
So let me--
Wasn't mine Ash Farm one of them?
If you back up with the rattails, they determine how many units you could get in.
Oh, yeah, White Ash Farm, right.
Then they went from that to develop their conventional subdivision, and then they went to the flexible.
Right, I mean, you could, you could look at this and say, this is a candidate for a flexible open space, except it's not a subdivision.
Right.
Yeah, well, like I was saying--
With smaller lots and some community land owned back in, in the corner, you know, or--
Like I was saying to Karen, you could have two duplexes quite easily on this. And you could still do that, which some people feel is not as marketable, but--
Right.
Probably two duplexes and a single.
But they'd be cheaper to build, too.
But all of this makes up the 20,000 square feet. That's why they have these little--
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, if you just cut, you know, cut a line through here, you could have a duplex here and a duplex here.
I'll bet you're gonna have a duplex here, a duplex here, and a single here.
Right.
I don't think you have enough land area to do that.
I, well--
You've got 20, 20, 20, 20. You've got 700, 900--
Oh, I see what you're saying. The total isn't enough. Okay. Yeah, 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 got it, got it, got it. Because you'd need 100,000 total to do that.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, yep.
So anyway, just, you know, whatever way you come down on it, you know, these people are, are pushing for some kind of a discussion.
But what can we do about it?
Well, we can't do anything about this one, right?
We could like scare them out.
Right.
Just like the accessory dwell.
Yeah. And if they wanna write the setting, I mean, we can, we can head them in the right direction where to look, or if you guys want to get more involved and--
I'd love, I'd love to see the Barnstable wording or somebody's wording that addresses that.
That's a great idea.
I'd love to get rid of rattails.
Yes.
Hate rattails.
Yeah. No, it's, it's--
They're rats.
It's so, it's so transparent, you know, a ploy to get around what shouldn't be done.
Yeah.
Or to allow what shouldn't really be done.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Onto a county?
Onto a county. No county?
No bills?
Oh, right.
No bill, no.
How about minutes?
We're broke. Oh, God.
Counting's easy when you're broke, yeah.
Right, right. We filed for chapter 11.
I move to approve the Situate Planning Board minutes from March 24, 2016.
Same what you said on an email?
Yep.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.